Good evening. I call this May twenty-fourth Commissioners Meeting in order if you'll stand and join me with the pledge and a quick prayer.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we ask that you bless our county and our nation. We ask for your guidance and your wisdom in making good decisions that would be pleasing unto you and help our county and our citizenry. All these things we ask in your heavenly name. Amen. Have the Commissioners had a chance to review the minutes from previous meeting? And if so, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three to zero. Commissioners had a chance to review the claims, and if so, do I have a motion?
Motion to accept is presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three to zero. Commissioners had an opportunity to review the payroll, and if so, do I have a motion?
Motion to accept is presented.
I second.
Motion and second to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three to zero. I have the Clerk's Monthly Report and Waits and Measures Report, and the Guidelines and Standards for the Administrative for Henry Township Assistance Report. Do I have a motion to accept these as presented?
So moved.
I second.
Motion and second to accept these reports. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three to zero. Food and beverage claims. We have project number fifty-six for the Hope Initiative match two thousand. We have ARA Small Business Grant Agreement matched for six thousand, and project number forty for eight hundred and forty-eight dollars and ninety-six cents. Do I have a motion to approve these?
So moved.
I second.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept the food and beverage claims. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three to zero. Next, Corey Murphy.
Good evening, Commissioners. I placed at your station two documents. The first one is a report on the Phase Three Supplemental Small Business Grants. Funding came from the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs to the county, and then the Economic Development Corporation assisted in the distribution. And so you have a list of the thirty-nine recipients, the amount, and the number of jobs. So it was two hundred and forty thousand in grant funds distributed, supporting two hundred and twenty-six jobs across the county, those thirty-nine small businesses, and the grant awards arranged from one thousand dollars to ten thousand dollars. And it's a pretty good cross-section from across the county. I won't say all corners of the county, but it is a nice cross-section. A little bit more than fifty applied, and the committee spent a few hours reviewing those applications based on a specific criteria. Most of the criteria was objective. In other words, if a business had a certain number of employees, then that was worth a certain number of points. If the business was veteran-owned or woman-owned, then that was worth a certain number of points. There were two subjective questions that the committee scored, and that was impact and need. And then so we scored all of them, and then if you noticed on some of these grant awards, they're kind of odd amounts. The amounts were determined, so we scored them, we added up all the points, and then we took a specific business's number of points, what was the percentage of that business out of the total of points, and then that percentage times the two hundred and forty thousand. And that's how we ended up with three thousand one hundred and seventy-eight dollars and seventy-eight cents for Blue River Financial. There were three maximum awards, so the maximum grant available was ten thousand. There were three of those. If you notice in here, there were some smaller amounts, say for example, the thousand-dollar award. The reason why that was a thousand dollars was is because the business's annual revenue was only two thousand dollars. So the committee decided to say that we didn't want to give a grant no more than fifty percent of annual revenue. I'll share this with the county council tomorrow night with apologies to the auditor's office and the attorney, because they get to hear it again, but appreciate the auditor's office's help and the county's support in securing these grant funds, but I wanted to give you an update on where the money went. The second item that I gave you is a heads-up, not asking for any action, really we just want to start a conversation. The County Redevelopment Commission is exploring a bond issue, a bond issue payable solely from tax increment finance, so no other source of revenue to guarantee or pay the debt service. Statute says that the Board of Commissioners has the final say on whether the bond is issued or not, and so I wanted to give you a heads-up, and then if you have questions later on, the Redevelopment Commission is going to meet in early June and kind of confirm our plan, and then I'll come back to you and let you know what's going on. The purpose of the bond would be for infrastructure, water and sewer out in the industrial park to support the land that was rezoned last fall. If you look on page two, and it's double-sided, so it's just under a three million dollar, and I'll say this is draft. These numbers may change a little bit. Just under three million, and then available for the project is two point eight. The next page is basically the amortization schedule, how the payments are set up, and then the last page shows all of the revenue available versus the Redevelopment Commission's outstanding obligations, and then this bond issue. And then the far-right column is estimated coverage. So the estimated coverage is well above a hundred percent, so for every dollar of revenue, we have about a dollar twenty-five, I'm sorry, for every dollar of debt, we have a dollar twenty-five of revenue. And I'll repeat again, the plan is not to ask the county for any other source of revenue. That has been the historic action of the Redevelopment Commission over the years. They have done several bond issues to support economic development, growth in the industrial park. You know, it does require and should require the support, or not, of the elected officials, but we're not asking for any other source of revenue. Happy to answer questions about this now, or you can email me, or maybe I come to a work session, but I just wanted to give you a heads-up. Timeline, I think probably July is when we would be needing you all to say yea or nay officially, but please let us know in the meantime if you have questions or concerns. The other item on your itinerary that I would like to handle is the resolution, Resolution twenty-two-three dash oh-five dash twenty-four. It is the, it represents final approval for the Redevelopment Commission's Plan Amendments. By way of reminder, this process started a couple months ago with the Redevelopment Commission adopting a resolution. Then that resolution went to the Plan Commission. The Plan Commission sent you a recommendation. You all voted on that recommendation. Then the County Redevelopment Commission published notice and held a public hearing and adopted a final resolution, and then it comes back to the Board of Commissioners as the chief executive branch of county government to say yea or nay. And so on behalf of the Redevelopment Commission, we're here to ask you to adopt the resolution. Would you like me to briefly go through the amendments?
If you would.
Okay. Yes, we would.
All right. So it creates a new allocation area in the ground that was rezoned last fall and in the ground that we're talking about doing some water and sewer. It creates a new allocation area in anticipation of a residential TIF project that is on ground adjacent to Rain Tree Heights at County Road Two Hundred North and State Road Three. It would allow the Redevelopment Commission to fund a worker attraction program in the future, so that's make my move. It would provide funds, if the Redevelopment Commission chooses to do so, to support downtown building redevelopment, like a facade grant in the smaller towns, so mirroring what's going on in downtown Newcastle and making that tool available in the smaller towns. It would provide existing funds to contribute toward the construction of a childcare facility. It would also allow the County Redevelopment Commission to contribute to the building costs, whether that be a remodel or a new construction for emergency medical services in the southern and northern part of the county. So those represent, oh, it also added some property to the acquisition list.
I don't remember those properties. I don't remember those properties to the acquisition list.
They're primarily around the industrial park and then one parcel in Dunreath. The acquisition list is quite long.
I've seen it, I just off the top of my head, don't remember.
We'll never acquire everything on the acquisition list, but if it's not on the list, then we can't acquire it, and we have to do the process that I just described. So we try to look out into the future and be as ready as possible.
I think we were given the list when you presented the original plan.
Happy to answer questions.
You have any joke?
I have no questions.
So you would like us to take action, wouldn't you?
I would, please, or I could sit down and wait.
So do I have a motion regarding Resolution twenty-two-three dash oh-five dash two-four-zero-zero-eight?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Resolution passes, three to zero.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next up, Mr. Garrish.
I only made one copy of these pictures, numbered them, and if you look through them and I numbered them, you'll see why I did that. But I also leave you research on what I'm asking. If I'm going to try to take this in a good humor, this situation, I'd like to blame Joe Wiley and Dale Sterns for causing this issue, because the traffic on six fifty north between Prairie Road and Three Hundred used to be almost nonexistent. They improved the road very well. They did a really good job of it, and I appreciate it. And at that intersection, they also did a bunch of work to improve the site, for the site distance in this situation. So I don't want you to think that I don't appreciate what the county has done. There are certain things that I believe need to be done, and in the process of coming up with this information that I've shared with you, I have talked to two different county attorneys and three county engineers, and I have the names of those, if you would like to get those later. I'm not necessarily going to bring them up at the meeting, but the conversations with my county engineer friends very clearly gave me some ideas. So what I'm trying to present to you, if I look at this information, anytime you need to do something as far as some kind of a traffic situation or a change in an intersection, there are several things that have to be taken into consideration. One of them is the crash rate, and I believe that this being a county road isn't that heavily traveled, and it would require an engineering firm to come out and do a count, traffic count. And then there's a formula, which I included in your thing there, they fill out, they fill that crash rate out, and then they can tell you what they observed as a result of it. The other thing that can be done is a field assessment, and that takes in site distance factors, and also included in the field assessment is skewed geometry. All those are things that are involved with this particular intersection. And if you're looking at the pictures heading from six fifty west at Prairie Road, I went out and went ahead and did measurements. Now, I'm more than happy to have somebody.
Six fifty north.
Yes, six fifty north, I'm sorry.
You said west.
Looking west.
Looking west.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Is this looking?
That's looking west, sitting on six fifty, Prairie Road is the road that's in the vision, and there's a stop sign there. At eight hundred north and Prairie Road, there is a four-way stop. But if you look at that intersection compared to this one, it seems strange, and it doesn't make sense to me that there's a four-way stop there based on the site distance and skewed geometry. It's not in the same kind of situation, that you can see much farther, but maybe that at one time, the traffic going through Springport was heavy, and maybe, I don't know. But my point is that that intersection has a four-way stop, this one doesn't, and there's more serious situations. I did get information from the Henry County Sheriff's Department. They gave me some information. It's not complete, and it's based on deaths at that intersection, and I know that that's not accurate, because it only includes the last few years. I don't know why, I don't know what the situation is, why I couldn't get more information. Maybe they didn't have it in the computer situation, I'm not sure, but I know that it's not, it doesn't go that far back. I know that they could only get to about in the nineties as far as accidents in that situation, but I included on the last three pages accidents, accidents with injury, and just accidents, because I thought that was kind of important. And just so you know, I was in no way influenced by the family of Barry Cooper to present this information, but I did want to acknowledge that that is a situation that has a concern. So I did the measurements and the site distance, and you can see the triangle there. I wrote down the things, but I didn't include it in your information, but the intersection site distance in this particular case is a hundred and seventy feet.
Are we looking at this page?
Yes, that triangle, if you look at that triangle, on the right side of that triangle, it's a hundred and seventy feet from the site distance spot, and I marked it with a blue flag in case somebody wants to go out and check my distances, because I may have been off a little bit one way or the other, but I'm open to let somebody else look at it. But a hundred and seventy feet is the distance from that blue flag to what I consider to be the point of impact if an accident happened, and that would be in the middle of that road of six fifty. At forty-five miles per hour, that hundred and seventy feet takes three point two seconds, three point two seconds, if they're traveling forty-five miles an hour, which is the county speed limit on all roads that are not marked, and that one is not marked. So that's pretty quick, three point two seconds, but that's, you know, it's a hundred and seventy feet. But I also took the opportunity to measure from that spot, the distance from my eye point to that same impact point, and that was sixty-five feet. I don't know if you're familiar with track and field, but I was a track coach, and very seldom can somebody run a hundred meters or a hundred yards in ten seconds, but the world record is right at that. And so if you use those figures, somebody sprinting from that spot to that designated spot, it would take two seconds if they're sprinting, which is pretty fast, and granted you're in a car, so you may be able to go a little bit faster, but that doesn't leave much room for error, and I don't see how somebody could miss that, because you've got, that's considering that it all happens at the same time. It does not take into consideration reaction time of a human being, so something else to consider. The clear sight distance is two hundred and ten feet. Now, obviously, in this diagram, it's a right angle, and you can use the Pythagorean theorem to figure out that those figures don't match, but that road does not make a right angle, so I just used that diagram as an example. So if you're trying to figure up and check my figures by calculator, it's not going to work out very well. It's very close, but it just doesn't quite work out. So. And very seldom can somebody run a hundred meters or a hundred yards in ten seconds. But the world record is right at that. And so if you use those figures, somebody sprinting from that spot to that designated spot, it would take two seconds if they're sprinting. Which is pretty fast and I granted you're in a car, so you may be able to go a little bit faster. But that doesn't leave much room for error. And I don't see how somebody could miss that because you've got, that's considering that it all happens at the same time. It does not take into consideration reaction time of a human being. So, something else to consider. The, um, the clear sight distance is two hundred and ten feet. Now, obviously in this diagram, it's a right angle and you can use the Pythagorean theorem to figure out that that, those figures don't match. But that road does not does not make a right angle, so I just use that diagram as an example. So if you're trying to figure up and check my figures by calculator, it's not going to work out very well. It's very close, but it just doesn't quite work out. So, as a result, the engineering firms and the county engineers have all told me that if you hire somebody to do this, it will be cheap. Now, by cheap, in my opinion, it's not, it's anywhere from two to four thousand dollars depending on which firm and what all they do. But I guarantee-
The traffic count?
That includes traffic count, that includes, includes a field assessment. That includes a major investigation following the MUTCD that you guys are familiar with and I'm sure the county attorney or the county engineer is familiar with. But if you follow the manual for local road uh, owners, which you guys are designated to follow, a field assessment with county engineer or with, with a, with an engineer here can solve this issue. Now, there's three ways to solve the issue that I see. One is to improve the way that intersection is made. So, we could put a roundabout there. I'm just trying to offer some options. Now, I think that would be pretty expensive and I think it's kind of silly, especially considering that particular ins- situation because I don't know that there's traffic that would require that. But that is one-
There are county roads in Hamilton County that have-
Yes.
County roads, I mean like-
I, I know.
County roads, whatever.
And Hancock's got some? Yep, there, counties are going to those, but I don't know that the volume is there for this particular and especially to pay for the extra right-of-way that would be required. So, I, to me, that one option is out. The other would be to improve the site distance by the removal. And if you see the pictures, there's a large number of big trees. Those are on private property. And my guess is the option to do that would be more than the, the cost of having the engineering firm come in and do an assessment. To take several, I mean, I mean it'd be many of those trees because they're locusts. And they've made a nice line and they're nice looking. But you're going to have to require work on the, uh, people's right-of-way that's along that road and they just build a new house. I'm not sure they're going to be conducive to that. Or the other would be to regulate with a four-way stop. To me, that seems pretty simple. As I told you, in my information says all it takes is a field assessment. I tried to make all of the measurements for you ahead of time. Feel free to check those. I'm not saying I'm the world's most accurate measure, but if you have a difference of opinion and, and one of the things as a science teacher I used to do, I used to have everybody come up and measure a rock. And the reason I did that, because if I had twenty students, I'd have ten or maybe more different measurements. Now, that's eighth grade students. But my point is that I'm willing to, you don't have to take my word on these exact measurements. But I really would like for you to take this into consideration with a field assessment and get the traffic uh, stopping at that intersection, especially if you consider that distance of sixty-five feet going through that intersection. A typical bus, school bus in particular, a short bus is thirty-five feet. Some of the more modern buses are forty-five feet. But if you look at a thirty-five foot bus going through that sixty-five feet, they're halfway through that intersection and they're not going to be going forty-five miles an hour. If you look and use your figures on the speed limit and, and if you use a little bit of math, you can figure out that they're not even going to get most of the way past the intersection before they're hit with the three point two second right-of-way. That's a school bus. And I don't even know if there's a school bus that goes through there. But I know that there's a lot of farm equipment and a lot of other types of traffic that go on that road. And most of them are not necessarily just a pickup or a car. So, I would like for you to consider this option. I tried to provide you with all the information that I have. I would be thrilled. And I know that the, uh, county engineers that I talk to, they would love to be able to make this county, to, to do this work. But that's at an extra cost, which I think you guys can already do this. It appears to me that that logic would be the most, uh, cost-efficient way of handling this.
I'll say I appreciate your going and taking all the extra effort and to go through this. I'd kind of like to refer it to our highway engineer-
Sure.
And see what he has to say and and if he's got something he wants to say now, that's fine. If not, we can get an assessment from him and go through it later. It's up to you, Joe.
We're, we're getting our traffic count repaired, the damage repaired. And we've got to find better, you know, the vehicles. Now, we sit in traffic count and out there checking out the town. But the speed and classification is going to be very-
Years ago, this one picture of number one where you're going westbound on six fifty north, stopped at Prairie Road. And when you look to the north, that seems to be the most obscured angle. And years ago, we clear-cut that hill. Did we not find out that that was an old state road that it actually, we actually have right-of-way there or was, am I mistaken?
I don't know that.
I, I know we, I know we cleared that because a lot of, you know, obviously it made it considerably safer and it stayed, stayed mowed down and cleared for a period of time. But that's, that's the most dangerous part of it.
Right.
But that'll, that'll be determined and, and, uh-
Well, now, I, I agree with you and unless that right-of-way has changed, that was old state road three.
Yes. I, I understand. I think when we did that bridge just south of of eight hundred, I don't know if we researched that at that time, but when we did that culvert pipe, it's, it seemed like we, I, I know it, I know it was a state road because the culvert that we took out was monster, a monster. But I, I was thinking that we knew that we actually have right-of-way there, but I could be mistaken.
The only thing else I want to add and kind of to increase the urgency of this is I want to make sure you understand that it does not have to have traffic count. It's not necessary in this particular situation. But you guys do whatever you want. One county engineer and one county attorney told me, now you're presenting this to the county commissioners, correct? And I said, yes, sir. And they said, do you realize what that's going to do to them? And I go, well, I get it, but I'm not trying to cause a problem here. I just want to try to help the situation and prevent further situations that are not good for the county. And he said, and his comment was, well, this puts an urgency to that situation because now if an accident happens at that and nothing is being done or has been done based on the information that I've provided you, then it's a, it could be a problem for you. I'm not, that's not my intention.
I'm just a little confused. Okay, I got it now. I'm going to admit, traffic and roads are not my wheelhouse, so, uh, and so I may be easily confused. Shut up. So when I was taking notes, were, you were talking about the field assessment-
Yes.
For traffic counts. So you're saying that's not required?
No, the field assessment by its, each of these could be separate. It could be a site distance issue and a field assessment could resolve this issue. Uh, you know, the, the, a decision to do something like this could be done with a field assessment. That's one option. The other option is with a traffic count. And that's most commonly going to be done. And almost every engineering firm is going to do that because they like to do those counts. Because that adds backup information for them for all parts of that county if they ever are able to do work there. And it adds information for them based on the traffic that's on that road. And they, they provide that to the state. And the state uses that, as Joe knows, for designation for how much money county roads get. And, and it's allotted. So, I'm just trying to give you as much information as I can.
So, the EIRPC uh, is Eastern, Eastern Indiana Regional Planning Commission, which we are part of. We are getting ready to approve, uh, which is required. Is that correct, Joe? This, what, the thing that we're getting ready to approve through EIRPC for traffic counts, it's a requirement within DOT or the state or something, but anyway, the state will pay for it. But we're getting ready to do traffic counts in Henry County, Wayne County, that group. That is, so that is one thing, just so, just so you're aware.
Yeah.
We're getting ready to approve that. That's a completely separate, I just wanted to let you know that, yes, traffic counts are getting, I don't know where. I think we're going to get six locations? Ten or six? I can't recall. Uh, but it's either ten or six. I don't remember.
I guess my point is two out of the three methods to determine how to do something about an intersection, two of those things are involved in this situation. One is the light, the line of sight. And the other is skewed geometry. Because that road makes a curve and curves back north, northwest or north, northeast, I'm sorry. So those two factors alone with a field assessment can produce all the information that you would need to make the decision to, to do something about this with, but a stop sign there. Or a four-way stop. Because there's a stop sign there, but.
Yeah.
Now, the other thing you could do is reduce the speed limit. But I, but, um, I've had people tell me that-
People go ninety.
I've had people tell me that they were told by a county official that the speed limit on that road's fifty-five. Now, if you go fifty-five, I don't, I didn't do the figures, but, and they do go fifty-five on Prairie Road, I guarantee you. I've watched. If that's the case, then that three point two second is not going to be very accurate. So, I'm, I'm just want to make sure that I'm giving you all the information that I've gotten. And you guys do whatever you want to and see what happens.
It is a bad intersection. I've driven it many a time. It is, it is not a good intersection. I, I, I agree with that. Um, and I agree that something needs to be done.
I would say at this point that we have our highway engineer review it, look into it, see what we can come up with. And we take it under advisement.
But I'd, I'd like to move quickly. I don't want to drag this out for weeks and weeks and weeks. Yeah.
Please don't make a mistake.
Yeah, no, I, I-
I'm urging you to get a second opinion.
Could you come up to the microphone? I agree that something needs to be done.
We're traveling this road daily. And I can't tell you how many times we've almost been hit with our granddaughter in the car, with other people in the car. We've watched other accidents happen or almost happen. And I mentioned it and a week later, somebody died. So, it's been brought to you, your guys' attention right before somebody died. So, if you go and wait for all this count, is somebody else going to die?
I personally don't think we need a traffic count myself.
Thanks.
Correct. I, I per, now, I'm not an expert, but I personally, Bobby Palmer sitting here, don't believe we need a traffic count.
Feel free to check any of the county engineers around and see if I'm wrong. I'm, I'm open to that.
I would, I would like to get information so that we can make a decision at our next meeting to do something. I don't know that, I, I don't know what the right thing is to do right now because I, my mind is trying to gather all this information that you have, um-
Well, I didn't expect a decision tonight. I, I don't want you to think that I expected one. But, um, I do want to tell you that every engineering firm that I talk to all said the same thing. Now you have created an urgency to correct the decision.
And I'll get with you afterwards to get the- It's not that I believe everything that you're telling me and I believe that you've talked to these, but if you said that we could get the, you know, that you weren't going to mention them, but I'll get with you afterwards and we can get the, yes, thank you. So I don't know the way I need to make that informal motion.
Motion's required at this point.
To, to do something.
And I wish you had a definitive action.
Right, yeah, no. So I, I guess, you know, I would, I would like to be able to make a decision, whatever decision that may be, by the June fourteenth meeting if possible.
Okay. Next we have department reports. I don't see health department, don't see coroner. Joe Copeland.
Good evening.
Evening.
I have four items this evening. The first is the, uh, highway operational report, annual report that's due. I've got, put it all together. It's ready to review and, and and sign. It used to be a lot more complicated. You had to put number of employees and what classification they were and equipment. Now, all they want to look at is, is the figures. Dollar amount. And they do ask one question about your, um, certified mileage on one page, but the rest of it is all. And I use the end of the year report last year, the beginning and end to do ma, make sure these numbers were correct with what the auditor had given. So, they match. Do you need a copy? I didn't know. I sent it by email.
We both got one of the-
This one?
I'll say we have the annual operation report right here.
Yep. We all have one. So we actually asked for four hundred and fifty miles last year? It says actual mileage asked for.
That's how much is in existence?
Oh, in existence, sorry. See, roads is not my-
Yeah, we did a little.
Roads is not my-
We did a little over sixty miles of road, one form or another, uh, last year.
I'm assuming we just need to make a motion to approve this. I've reviewed it. I guess Joe Wiley is the one that would be the most to ask questions.
I'd make a motion that we approve this.
I will second it.
Motion to second to approve the annual report. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three, zero. This is the one that you needed signed, correct, Joe?
Yeah, I signed the, the last sheet on that one.
Gosh, it's very small writing.
Ready?
Yep.
Okay, this is a bid recap of the bids for the Community Crossing Matching Grant Funding for Resurfacing. Uh, there are five projects. We had two bidders, E and B Paving and Milestone Contractors. Low bid was Milestone at one million, two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two dollars, which is cheap. That's low. Next bidder was E and B at one million, four hundred and fourteen thousand, seven hundred and thirteen dollars and forty-two cents. I would recommend to accept the low bid, Milestone Contractors.
I will make the motion to accept low bid, Milestone Contractors.
I second the motion.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, second five is saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
Next item is pavement markings. Joel was good enough, uh, to put together an agreement that the company Accurate, uh, has done our, Accurate Striping, had done our pavement markings in twenty-one on a quote, and they did them in twenty-two because we carried over the same price from twenty-one. And they've advised me that they're willing to continue that price from twenty-one and through twenty-three. So Joel was good enough to put together an agreement that takes care of carrying that over through twenty-twenty-three at the same prices as twenty-twenty-one.
Do I have a motion to accept this?
Make a motion, we accept the contract price extension agreement.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to accept as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero. Do you need one of these signed, Joe?
Please.
You're getting a lot of wear and tear on those shoes, aren't you?
Small print.
Yeah, Debbie needs to sign that one.
The, uh, the last item is a schedule, proposed schedule of bridge work, bridge maintenance, either replacement or repair. Uh, I've been working on this for some time. Our problem is Cune Bridge. Cune Bridge is not generating enough money to keep up. Looks like we're only getting around three hundred and fifteen, three hundred and fourteen thousand a year, all right? Um, I can do one small bridge with that, but that's it. And we have, uh, a federal contract that we have to follow for bridge inspections. That's a requirement you have. So sometimes, every first and third year, it's four-year contract, every first and third year, as Joe knows, those prices are higher because they have to do full inspections. Okay? It's not just certain bridges, it's all bridges. Uh, this year, we're slated to do what they call Phase Two, which is the third year. Um, and our inspections are done in July. The problem I'm having is trying to get these bridges done. Now, you're gonna see weight limits, and, and I hate to say this, but, um, we have roughly a hundred and forty-four bridges in this county. Randolph has two hundred and seventeen. We have more bridges on, with weight limits than they do. And I'm afraid it's gonna get worse when July comes. We, we gotta get after these things, all right? But we can't, the problem is you, if, if we raise the Cune Bridge rate, it affects the general fund. And the general fund doesn't have enough money now to, to barely cover, okay? So that's out. So what I'm wanting to do, I'm, I'm taking Bridge One Twenty-Six on Garner Street up here over Big Blue. The deck's bad. I have an eight-inch deck and two un, two inches of the top. You might as well say it's gone, because it's, uh, it's no longer working as one unit. The rebar's rusted so bad that it separated the top two inches. So now I got a six-inch deck. I figure we may get a load limit on it in July. Uh, but anyway, I'm taking that money out of Low Hut because I'm gonna use Community Crossing Matching Grant Funds. I'm gonna apply for those in January to try to get money for the construction of that project. Now, and that's estimated, our cost at two hundred and twenty-one thousand at this point in time. Uh, commu-, uh, Community Crossing is six hundred and sixty-three. So it's over eight hundred thousand dollars right now. Uh, and that's a full deck replacement. So what I'm asking if I might do, uh, state law says MVH eleven seventy-three restricted fund, that we can use that for roads, but we can also use that for bridges. My question is, I would like to take five hundred thousand dollars out of that fund and put it toward bridges. So we can get some of this maintenance done and, and hopefully some more bridges. There's one bridge I wanna try to get done today on two hundred more, or this year, I should say. And it's slated as the next in line to, to be replaced. Uh, our replacement list, I can give you a copy of it to get an idea how bad it is. What I can do with the additional money is not only maybe get some more bridges replaced, but I can do some maintenance on some of them, deck repair and overlays. We have one big structure down this South County line, just east of Knightstown. It's over two hundred feet long, five-span bridge, and it's needing deck repair and overlay. It's, it's being patched potholes now, so. It's down the list, but, we'd put that in on them to try to get that federally maintenance money for bridges. And it turned out they did away with it. They didn't have the funds to cover it.
So you,
They got shut down. I don't think you'll, from what I'm hearing, you, you won't see that funding come out again. It's over. So, will it, will it cut into our road work? Yes, a little bit, sure will. But here's the thing, I mean, you can do all the road work in the world, but if the bridge is closed, it doesn't do you any good.
So to either replace, rehabilitate, widen, repair, or eliminate all these bridges on the list, we're looking at nine point five million dollars?
Yeah, category one is replacement. All right, category two is rehabilitation. Uh, and there is no three, so four is repair. And there's quite a few, you can see all the bridge deck overlays they've got little to do. A smaller br, I say smaller. Seventy, eighty-foot bridge. Uh, deck repair and overlay probably costs you in a neighborhood of a hundred, maybe a little more, a hundred thousand. A big bridge, uh, you're gonna get up into closer to two hundred thousand, probably.
So it looks like our priority would be this five million, three hundred and seventy-five thousand category is what you're looking at?
That's what they're looking at. I'm looking at, at through year twenty-twenty-eight, a deficit of about two and a half million right now, without using the MVH. And that's, this is about as hard as I can cut it and still get something accomplished. We're still behind by, by their requirements, but at least we're getting something done.
So, council will have to make the approval to transfer the five hundred thousand from eleven seventy-eight?
I believe so, yeah.
I could, I,
It's already usable for bridges, is that correct?
That's, that's, yeah, that's state law.
Yeah, and if, if it's already allowed to be used for bridges, it's not otherwise appropriate.
Just do it.
It's almost like he's wanting our approval to let him transfer that money.
I will make the motion to transfer, allow approval to transfer five hundred thousand dollars from eleven seventy-three for bridges.
I second the motion.
Oh, it's not to use it for bridges, excuse me, sorry, to use it for bridges, my, my bad, I used the wrong word. To use five hundred thousand dollars from the eleven seventy-three fund for bridges. Bridges.
So I have a motion in a second. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, second five is saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
Thank you. That's all I had unless there was any questions.
I have anything?
I don't either. Mr. Rust.
I've got one thing is, uh, we've got a professional service agreement from JSE. Four has been handed in to, uh, Joel Harvey for review for Section Corner perpetuation, reestablishment in the Henry County. If anybody's got questions on it, Joel, if you've got any, be glad to answer it. It's just to continue on with our Section Corner work.
And Joel, you review this?
I moved out, they made a couple edits I suggested.
You're good with it?
I'm good with it.
Um, it's got a base contract of fifteen thousand. The additional and supplement services for ten says prior authorization required. That means if I go over the fifteen, then I come back and, okay.
With that, do I have a motion to accept this?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
I've got, uh, three copies. If I can get them signed, I'll get one to them and one to me, and then Debbie will need one.
And just see,
That was the one they sent me.
This is the one with the edits? Yeah.
I have, I mean, I have one copy of it.
No, this is, Joel, yeah, Joel brought the new one. This is the only copy we have of the edits. Yeah. Oh, this version's good. So you need all three, all of these signed? So you just need the three copies, Steve? And Debbie's got, yeah.
There's two of them.
We've, we've got like four.
Yeah, like I just bought a house.
Yeah.
Don't see Tom Green.
Sheriff, do you have anything?
I just have some updates. No chronological order here. We are, um, now doing registration for sheriff camp. That's for the kids ages ten to eighteen, so that's exciting. It's coming up in, um, on the sixteenth, uh, through the nineteenth of June.
That's a real part, right?
Yes, correct, that's right. So that's exciting. Um, body cameras have,
You say June?
Yes. Uh, sixteenth through nineteenth. And registration, like I said, is going on now. Again, these are just some, some updates, no, no real rhyme or reason, a little sporadic, but just wanna cover some highlights. Body cameras, um, they, they have been in for a while. We're getting ready to start training on them. And, um, within, within two months, um, everybody should have body cameras. So that's, that's an exciting thing. I say exciting, it's a good thing. I don't think a lot of our people are excited about it.
Well, I do have a question about that, because when we were looking at the ARP balances, we still show a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars in the body cams? Something, roughly, I'm gonna say roughly, don't quote me on the exact.
Uh, you left us spend on them or something?
Well, it, because we only appropriate, we appropriated, we haven't gotten the bill yet.
We'll find out.
Okay.
We'll, we'll, she'll get,
I hadn't planned on bringing it up tonight, but since you brought up the body cameras,
I'm, I'm glad I brought it up now, so, um, I thought, uh, one thing that I, I don't think it's that much. I think it's more like ninety-eight thousand or something of that nature.
I think we just appropriated up to,
So there may be some extra money there. Um, our new lateral hires, we was here a, a month ago asking for bonuses for lateral hires. Um, we have hired two officers from Newcastle Police Department. And, uh, one of them is finishing the FTO process, Brandy Pierce. Um, we purchased the K, her K-nine from Newcastle as well. So she'll actually be on her own end of this week. So, that was a great process, um, and just, you know, got some great experience over here. And, um, we're also running a, a hiring process again, um, open for laterals or just for, for, for anyone who, you know, fit certain criteria. So, um, that is going on. We're taking applications, I believe, until the fifteenth of next month. So we're, we're still needing three more officers. We have a couple officers at, uh, the Police Academy. They've got about, about thirteen weeks left. So, we had our second J-CAP graduation. Uh, you all, I think all of you all, Joe may, maybe I've been there, uh, attended, a- and it was, it's, it was a wonderful time. Um, I have really appreciated, again, that's our second graduation, and I've appreciated hearing from, uh, these inmates who have taken this program. It's a very encouraging, just, it's very encouraging, and you guys could, could speak to that, just a wonderful time, and, uh,
It's heartbreaking and encouraging at the same time, to hear their stories.
Educational, it's shocking, some of the things that they've dealt with in life and that they're overcoming. And we're just really excited about, um, about, that program is, is, uh, is doing well. And the people are doing well, and I'm excited about that. While we were in that meeting, uh, they brought up, one of the, uh, graduates brought up, um, the food change. We finally did transition to food, uh, from, um, we are now purchasing the food and, and doing the cooking in-house. We hired a cook. So they were very excited, in fact, we got a round of applause for that. And, um, I, I just appreciate all the work that everybody did to make that happen. And, um, our inmates are happy about it. And, uh, I, I'm, I'm happy about it because we're, we're treating them better in the food category. Our jail population is two hundred and thirteen today. We, we dipped down to, we got in the one, in the one-eighties, like one-eighty-five there for a while. I got really excited about that, but we have, um, just slowly been creeping back up. Full is technically a hundred and ninety-seven. We can hold two forty-six.
Maybe you shouldn't have served such good food.
Well, uh, it's all right, I still wanna serve good food. Well, uh, it's all right, I still want to serve good food. Uh, but I just do want to keep this on the radar that, you know, I, I just, I don't know, um, I don't know what's driving the scooting back up, but I know the prosecutor, they're working diligently to, you know, to keep people where they need to be, whether it be DOC or on, on, uh, home detention. And, um, I just want to keep it, uh, in our mind that, um, you know, we're running, we're running full, so, um.
I, I read the report, I mean, I think we all read the report every day.
Yeah, yeah.
And keep, keep track of it.
It got down about 185, and it's just creeped up.
It's just been creeping, creeping back up.
Hopefully it'll creep back down. Um, so we are implementing, um, a lot of new training for jail staff, and, uh, the jail staff is excited about that. Um, the jail commander has, uh, worked hard to, uh, bring this about. We have paid for it out of our commissary fund, and, uh, it's just, it's, it's, it's going well, and I'm excited about more training, uh, good training. And, um, so like I said, we bought the K9, uh, off of Newcastle. I was checking on K9 insurance, we have not carried insurance on, on our K9s. So we're, we're working on getting our K9s covered, those are obviously very expensive. Um, we're working on that. Just another couple of maintenance items, we're working on cleaning up vehicle registrations. Uh, vehicles haven't been registered for a couple of years. We've got about 14 of them that are, have not been registered, and we don't even, we don't have the title. So we're, we're working on getting that caught up, cleaned up, and hopefully soon. Uh, I know Debbie's involved in working a lot in that, thank you Debbie. Uh, but it's, it's, it's coming around, hopefully we'll have all of our vehicles properly registered, uh, one of these days. Let me see here, um, Joel has been working on and has completed a memorandum of understanding for our area drug task force, and, um, I appreciate that. Uh, we, we now have that fully staffed on the, on the city side and the county side. It's something that's very, very important to have that operating and operating smoothly. Um, so, so some things are getting squared away there, and I appreciate the work, uh, from Joel on that. Any questions for me, that's about it on updates?
I don't.
No question?
Oh, I thought Joel was getting ready to-
That's what I was waiting on.
Lean forward, I thought you were getting ready to ask.
All right, all right, that's all, thanks.
Thank you. Debbie, do you have anything?
I just want to say when you said thanks for the registration, we need to also thank, it's Kayla.
Kayla.
For me that is doing 99% of the work, so.
It is a lot of work.
She's done an excellent job.
Yes, yes.
Thank you, Kayla.
Yes, thank you, Kayla. I don't see Jimmy, don't see anybody from the park.
I don't think we're Glan, I think we're down all the way to Glen. I don't see Treasury, we can't handle 911.
Glen, do you have anything today? Glen's good? So we're done with reports. Next item is quotes from Margeson Graphics for the awning on the transition center for $6,618. I think it's even, yep. Includes awning work for the frame done here. Do I have a motion to approve this?
So moved, the awning was destroyed in the last round of storms that came through.
Saying it's not hardly enough to turn in on insurance with the deductible, so. I have a motion, do I have a second?
I second.
Motion to second to approve this quote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero. New business, Department of Corrections, we have a contract with the Department of Corrections for the soft water at the new jail. The total under the contract is not to exceed 90,249.66. The consideration during this period is 67,687.20 cents. It's over a three-year period, the yearly, or quarterly, I believe it is, uh, is 5,640.60 cents.
Per quarter, yep.
Per quarter. So the fee for years, 22,562.40, which we agreed when we were building the jail, this was going to be better for us than putting in softener system in the jail. So do I have a motion?
So moved, and I, I don't believe the price has increased from the, uh, from the last year, I believe it's-
I believe you're correct.
It's the same and hasn't gone up, so make the motion to approve the water softening fee from DOC.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
I second the motion.
Motion's made and seconded to approve, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero. We already talked about the 240,000 for the ARA draw, is that what-
That, that's what Corey presented, but we haven't made the motion to-
Do I have a motion to approve the draw request that Corey talked about earlier?
So moved.
I second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero. The other item is a appointment recommended from the Henry County EDC for John Madison and Mont Switzer to serve on the EDC board through the appointment by majority vote of the county commissioners and the county council. Both are willing to continue to serve in that organization. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve those appointments, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero. Next up, we have the bid recommendation for road resurfacing because the private enterprise renewal does not need to be proved in a public meeting, correct?
Correct.
And we did, basically, that's opening the bids, which we did with Joe earlier, so that takes care of that too. Now we have an inter-local agreement.
We'll make sure that this one is the most recent one, this, I'm excited.
This is for the drug task force between Henry County and the city of Newcastle. The Newcastle's Police Department, Henry County Sheriff's Department have previously formed drug, area drug task force and primarily investigating crimes related to the sale and distribution of illegal drugs in Henry County. Newcastle and Henry County wish to memorialize the terms under which the ADTF will operate. It is now for their agreed, Newcastle will assign two officers to the ADTF, Henry County will assign two officers. The officers assigned shall work in cooperation with the investigation of drug trafficking and vices occurring in Henry County. All assignments to the ADTF shall be in the discretion of the chief of police or the sheriff, and the chief of police or sheriff may at any time reassign their respective officers to other details and replace the officers assigned to the ADTF. At all times and purposes, Newcastle officers assigned to the ADTF shall be the employees of Newcastle and Henry County Sheriff's Department's officers shall be employees of Henry County. Officers assigned to the ADTF shall experience law enforcement officers' training and conducting investigations, while assigned to the ADTF officers shall receive periodic training and instruction while conducting investigations involving drug trafficking. Do I really need to read all of this?
You don't need to read all of it.
Thank you. Sheriff, do you have anything to add to this?
No, I, I've read it, and, uh, it's good, the chief, uh, spoke over there as well, and he's covered the credibility of the government. I'd like to say the important thing about the, uh, the, uh, the task force being combined, we had a conversation a few days ago, we were discussing with Ted, uh, about things like resources for, um, sort of higher tech, it's just that we didn't have that as needed. Um, and so I just sort of kind of put that out there now, to probably have some conversation come up about it. Uh, not due to dollars, but, but I think we would be wanting to come together and work together together over a technical division, or we can share, um, sort of higher, uh, items, so.
Okay, with all that, do I have a motion to approve the inter-local agreement between city of Newcastle and Henry County Sheriff's Department?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to accept this inter-local agreement, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero.
I have one more thing. I'm sorry?
The one we have is, the one I have is not to get dropped.
Yeah, he, yes, he did, yes, that he gave, yes. While you're signing that, I'm going to, I have one thing that's not on the itinerary. Uh, so probably starting in Mar, February or March, Joel, there is a couple of properties, uh, that have, um, dead ash trees that are not in our right of way on private, just, just a few inches not in our right of way that are over the roads. I know we've talked, it's on 200 West. And we contacted, uh, both homeowners, one homeowner did go out and clear, uh, the trees that were over the roads. The other, the house is vacant, uh, I'm not sure how long it has been vacant, but we've not had any, uh, luck in reaching, uh, the homeowner. So Joel published the notice, uh, in April for 75 days before we could move forward. And so now in order to, I guess, day before yesterday, one of, a larger limb or part of one tree fell into the road. So for safety, uh, we need to do something to get these trees, uh, off of the road. If you want to talk about the options, Joel, without me re, or, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure there are several, but basically I serve those indicating properties not safe premises because of the danger of the trees potentially falling into the roadway. That order then was, uh, published, the owner did not request a hearing in front of commissioners, which would have then allowed him to present evidence as to why it wasn't a dangerous condition. So then the order is now final. He's not yet remedying that condition, so you have the option to go in and do the work on your own, help him, or you can do it, file a lawsuit, get a court order to do it, that could be, you know, 45 days or so. Uh, the other way to do it would be to have someone, you know, order they based in, do this type of work. You could just pay the cost of less than $10,000, you could have that person do the work and certify the cost of the property.
We, uh, I'm going to ask Joe and Steve, we don't have anybody under contract for base bid to clear out trees or anything, do we?
Not, not under contract.
Not under contract? I'm sorry?
I've got three quotes that are people, I'm going to call them, and they're all going to be there.
So that doesn't qualify, okay. So we can solicit quotes and ask for a price for tree removal, um, if needed in general at this and needed at other times in 2023. So with that, I am going to make a motion that we, uh, solicit quotes, uh, for tree removal in general. And we can at least use it for this property and any other properties that may.
And I guess one other thing to note, I mean, it's, it's, you're allowed to do work limited in scope for remedy the danger. So it's not necessarily you have to go out and hire somebody to grind the stumps now.
Right.
Remove the logs, but it would just be to remove those portions of the trees.
That were, that are over-
Potentially fall into the roadway, so it's limited in scope for eliminating the danger, you don't need to make it like I said.
Do the whole thing, do landscaping, right, okay. So I'm going to make that motion that we solicit quotes for tree removal.
I second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero.
And that's all I have.
Uh, we have another item that was, uh, we need to discuss is an employee policy regarding the FOBs for the new timekeeping system. FOBs apparently cost us $5 apiece. We had an employee already lose one and needs to be replaced. We believe that probably, as of right now, since we don't have a policy, we replace this one. Uh, going forward, I think we need to amend a policy that if you're losing your FOB to clock in and out, that you have to pay for it. So that's just my thought on it right now.
I agree. Uh, you know, the first, the first person, because we didn't address it when we got the FOBs, um, I don't think that we should charge them for it because they had no idea. Uh, but moving forward, I think I will make the motion or to amend policy on the FOBs that if it is lost, uh, the employee will pay the $5 cost. And it's just the cost, we're not making any money on it, the cost to replace them.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero. We already addressed the resolution. So any comment from the public? Going once, twice?
Motion to adjourn.
I want to say, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, this meeting is adjourned, thank you all for coming.